Then, homeing place staying for the place of the lighters.
Let's make this to the prime of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present are Darrell Baker County clerk, Phoebe Harless, Josh Dowers, and Dr. Vance on the phone. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last regular meeting?
Motion.
I'll take that.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Andrew, public comment. We have John Smith here, but you're on the agenda too down under discussion and possible action. John's here with the Lincoln County Prevention Coalition. If you want to come up, or you can just stand back, whatever.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Do I need to go anywhere?
No.
Okay. We need a fiscal agent in this county for our coalition in order to qualify for federal grant money that's out there at the tune of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Until we get an in-house, in-county fiscal agent, we don't even qualify to write for the grant. And it just seems to make sense that you guys would be interested in going into the schools and preventing some of the madness that we're dealing with on a daily basis out there. It's a small budget. Right now, I'm only working with twelve thousand plus a three thousand dollar additional from Prestera. It's a drawdown grant, which that means it'd be paid back monthly. I don't think I've yet to have more than two thousand dollars in one month, so.
Okay, just for the record, at the last meeting, John was here and went over and talked with us a little bit about the fifteen thousand dollars. And it means that would have to happen before, when did you say that we've?
The grant cycle renews in October first, but we have been, was I not told that we might be able to do that?
We can switch the paperwork over if you're willing to become the fiscal agent, so we can do that as soon as.
So would that just finish off this, if we would go ahead and agree to do it, it would finish off this fiscal year with what you have? Is that correct?
Correct.
Start over June first?
Gonna start over October first.
October first.
Yeah.
All right, so what all we would be looking at upfront would, right now, would be max fifteen thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That would renew in October.
Right.
Right.
And then the rest of what you have. But everything would be reimbursed back to us?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, you wouldn't be out anything, it's just you'd be, you'd be covered, you know, the stipend, the mileage, and the SAD activities. And you'd be paid back every month. You're not gonna be out anything, other than allowing us to be able to qualify for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar prevention grant.
So, we would do like a memorandum of understanding with you all for the first part, which I think Mary may have. Then, did you already give that?
Yes.
Then, if you were going to apply for this larger grant, then we would have to approve that, and you would get that too as we vote to sign, approve, apply for it down the road?
Correct.
Okay. I understand, I just wanted to be on the record, so.
And looking forward, I don't see us, I don't see us feasibly being ready to even write for that until the twenty twenty-one year. That'd be in February of twenty twenty-one.
Do you have that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So this is for the ten thousand, then the other three or whatever?
Well.
Yeah, that's for the fifteen thousand dollars for this year.
Yes. Right, this is what we would enter in with you all. Yeah.
The agreed, the MOU would be signed between the county commission and Prestera. And it's on behalf of the Lincoln County Coalition.
So the MOU would be with Prestera?
Correct. Because we're the fiscal agent for the SAD grant.
Is that just for this grant? Your current grant?
Yes.
Till September thirtieth?
Yeah, then September thirtieth, and then we'll start back on October one.
They sign that every year? There'd be another one in October, February?
Yes.
Yes.
At the state grant, yes.
So you said you wouldn't be able to, you think, apply for the larger grant until when?
It's in, the, it's a drug-free communities grant, DFC, federal grant.
Sure.
And I think the dates, it comes due on February, so I'm looking to go back to the CADCA training, which is primarily for that, but we've still got a lot of things we need to get to be eligible to even apply. This is the first step. I'm looking at twenty twenty-one February for the application for that grant.
Okay, so, right, where this, is this an MOU that you renew every year? Is that the way this works?
That's for the state grant that we work under.
Okay, so, why, since, since we're not looking until twenty twenty-one until you wanna apply, could we just, instead of trying to mid-year come in?
How much money's left in this? Okay, I'll give you that. What sense it's almost?
I think not, but I can get an answer for that. I'm gonna say they have a little over half left.
So this just will go, then, then you would have to apply for this grant again, instead of going, the grant going through Prestera, it would go through us and then?
No, you're talking about this grant?
This grant here for them.
No, it would go, it would just, next year, it would start back here.
Would it, would it not be more seamless if we just let this MOU go through September thirty, and we start back up in a brand-new funding cycle? Would, would that not be maybe a little bit more seamless, rather than us coming in the middle of a funding cycle right now, then redoing it? I, I don't know, what is?
I understand where you come from, and I, I see that, absolutely. What we're trying to do is just take away a little bit of the, we're, because there's so much at Prestera, we kind of fall to the wayside. And it's, no one's fallen in particular, it's just, I thought it would be easier to run the funding out of the county. It just makes sense that it's the county's prevention coalition.
Sure, I mean, I, I agree with, with the concept of doing this, I just meant on the timing of, while we, you know, you've got this that's up in, you know, five months.
The items that have already been done, they would count, like, so it's not that you would have to start over, it would just that the funding would come to you. Does that make sense?
Okay.
You wouldn't have to restart the MOU, the MOU would continue. So the work that's already been completed, has already been completed.
Okay, but October first?
It would start all over.
But would, but you all would just be out of it? Like, this is between us and Prestera?
Correct.
But then October first?
It's still between us and Prestera.
It's still between?
Yes, and John would be the one that still continues to do the work, yes.
We wouldn't be risk, I'm just, I'm just thinking things off the top of my head. We wouldn't be risking any of this funding by jumping in the middle of this funding cycle.
No. No.
We'll just be writing checks out to John, or to the coalition.
And then we'll?
And then they will be writing a check back to.
Absolutely.
Prestera will be writing a check back to.
At the end of the day, what it's gonna do is make the operations of Lincoln County Prevention Coalition more seamless.
Right.
I don't have a problem with wanting to be like Josh, of course. Do you, what do you think, Doc?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So the reimbursement is due on the tenth of every month, and then you would be paid back by the end of the month, so it would be like a two-week period. Does that make sense? So, for example, for April, for April's payments, they're due by the tenth of May, and then you get a check for April by the end of May. And it continues like that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, my thought is, we do it, see how this works until the end of September, and then we don't have to hop out if it's not working.
And that, I mean, to be honest with you, that might be a good idea to see how it works, but I think, oh, there's all other counties that do use the SAD grant, or they use the county commission as their fiscal agent. So we do have other counties that do it.
I'm sure at least the seamless you'll wanna do it again.
But like I said, it doesn't, like, the work that's already done on the MOU, it's already done, so it's not that you have to start all over. You're just continuing, and the only thing that would be different is Prestera writes the check too.
Okay.
I didn't have that, but I would think a motion to him like that, it's not my department.
Yeah, we, okay.
I would look like that, but.
This MOU says ten thousand.
Right. I can get a half-page of MOU for us to have that has the correct amount.
So we've been dealing with two different motions here, one to enter into this current MOU, and then another motion to the, the county commission be the fiscal agent for the prevention coalition?
Yeah. Okay, so I have, let's do the second motion first. Doc, Doc, Josh has made a motion for the county commission to be the fiscal agent for the Lincoln County Prevention Coalition.
I'll take that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Motion carries. He also has made a motion to enter into this memorandum of understanding with Prestera, basically on behalf of the Lincoln County Prevention Coalition.
I'll take that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for that, all in favor, aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Some one of them, I mean, I don't want to get two.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you very much, really appreciate you guys.
Now, if you'll just send me a new, if you're gonna send me a new one with the exact figure, I, then they get, you wanna decide that one?
Yes. Because it also has the wrong prevention lead on it.
Yeah.
So we'll.
Okay, so that, it'll cover, would that, how should, just somebody get it, we'll sign?
Okay.
I know I'm not on those, the, the talking point, but I just wanted to say, John and the SAD program did a bang-up job at Logan after bomb. They had great food, they had adult blowups, and it was wonderful. And the kids were like thrilled about it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the next, to the next item, is the West Virginia Workforce Region Two Summer Cleanup Crew. Jake Hunt had prior obligation tonight of. But we did get some dates. They're going to be accepting applications over at their office located in the southern wing of the hospital. He's gonna, they're gonna take applications between May sixth and May twentieth from ten to three. So that's the only update I have on it, and we're still looking at June first to start, and.
How many physicians, or how many?
I think he was shooting for fifteen to twenty, but he said it can, it can go up or down either.
He was just gonna kind of, you know, start taking the applications and get a follow-up, okay, how many kids are interested and all that. So I'm gonna get with him before the next meeting to have him help me get a letter, and we'll have to run an ad and everything.
He's already got the ad, or he'll have the ad to his, what, what letter?
But we're gonna have, we are going to have to be the ones to hire the supervisor.
Yeah.
Then they'll just reimburse us for it.
Okay. Well, he'll have the ad, but we may have to work on that for it, but he'll have the ad ready to go.
Okay. All right, we'll have that part all ironed out before our next meeting. Okay, so, the next thing is Lisa Wells is here with Region Two.
I do have to come, because I'll have to, imagine that. I do not have a drawdown per se to present tonight. I have kind of a tweaking of last month's drawdown. And we, I had proposed another budget amendment, because as we are moving line items around that blows out, to ensure that we use all the grant funds that will expire, keep running into little glitches, so I do apologize for that. One of those is, we have been moving the accounting line item back and forth, and you did approve at the last meeting a budget amendment with regard to that, the accounting line item, and this was budget amendment, I believe, number, sorry, five. Well, we're going to not submit that and void that. It did not take into account its three thousand nine hundred dollar credit that the accounting firm's giving back. So we've had to adjust, it was a bill that they had caught that they no longer needed, and so we're crediting it back to the account. So more or less, where that budget amendment request has been voided, not submitted to the development office, everything stands as it was with the previous budget. However, one of the paperwork items that is required in the previous drawdown has a budget that reflects that, and everything has to add up to the state auditor's office. It really doesn't require a motion per se, because you've already approved a drawdown, the drawdown amounts do not change, this is just backup documentation with budget itself, but it has to line up with everything else.
So that's to go back to the original?
Right, so that's what this, this one form is tweaking, and they're waiting for it, and I will, once it's signed, we'll submit that in there, so everything matches.
Let's go ahead and make a motion just to be safe.
Okay.
Okay, let me see, so, what are we going to say here? It was budget re, or revision number five?
Budget amendment number five, you can look to void that budget amendment request, and everything is restored back to where it was based on budget amendment number four. Sorry about that.
So, so.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Lisa, it's been a long day.
And I have one more thing, I know that we've had a day of the Mud River project, but let's talk about the next phase of Mud River. You know that this past year, we had submitted a community development block grant request for the second phase? That, there's, it was not funded, the announcements didn't come. However, I'm not surprised, considering we were asked to, at the end of January, to submit an ARC application instead, which was not part of the original funding scenario. So I'm not surprised that the community development block grant was not funded.
What was that on my own for? I was trying to think about that.
One point five.
Was, was the second phase two?
Yes.
Also one point five?
Yes. But as I said, do not be disheartened by that, I'm not surprised since they came out of the blue and asked for an ARC application around the end of January.
For the same amount?
Yes. So you?
Yeah, we basically took, they asked us to take the community development block grant dollar amount out and replace it with a funding scenario with ARC taking its place.
Makes you feel a little bit better.
Okay, so, but that's not a guarantee, and I need to completely, you never know how that's gonna go through the process. But that means it's strongly being considered, I take that as very encouraging when they ask you to submit, as I said, we were not ever anticipating submitting an ARC application for that. Again, not a guarantee, obviously, it shows a strong consideration.
First phase, was there an ARC application?
No. ARC funding has not been in this project at all.
What was the title for phase two?
I do not have that off the top of my head. It's less than, I mean, it's a smaller project than phase one.
Did the Army Corps of Engineers, was there a factor?
So we're just kind of waiting till we seal down that last bit of funding, but here's my request to you. Those ARC announcements will not be made until, be soon as probably October this year. In the meantime, a community development block grant application is coming due more than likely, they have not announced the official deadline for the water and sewer projects, but I'm, have a strong feeling it'll be about the end of July. I'm asking you in order to, because there are no guarantees, and persistence is key in this game, would you like us, on your behalf, to submit another community development block grant as we wait to hear any funding? So just kind of seeing, if you direct us to do that, we would be happy to.
I'll say, yes.
We need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion for them to?
It's usually, it's, yeah, well, that would be, that'd be fine, if you would help us get our official direction to do so.
I'll move as Region Two to apply for the new funding cycle for the community block grant.
I'll take that.
Okay, now the motion is second, all in favor, aye. Motion carries. Apply for it.
Whenever we find the deadline, whenever that's announced.
Cause any, I was just trying to think about the funding scenario. If we don't get the whole project funded, and there's commitments from other places?
The thing is, USDA is a part of this, and USDA, for them to release the fund, everybody, everybody, it's, it's one of those things, everybody's gotta be in, it's like the perfect storm of lining up the funding sources, and that usually is what takes the longest in getting a project together, is getting everybody lined up just so.
You couldn't say if the USDA said, okay, you've been awarded five hundred thousand dollars, unless it's all in, they're not gonna put it, to do a little extension, or?
That one doesn't, but here, there's something to take into account, as we're wrapping up phase one, and again, no guarantees, I've not talked to Rick and I, and no one has talked yet specifically about that, we're trying to use all the grant money. And that would be from community development block grant, Army Corps of Engineers, that's why I'm tweaking all the time at the state, the stage, because we do lose, it's user lose, you have to send back. USDA has a little bit more flexibility, and I imagine there's going to be some money left over from USDA. Rick, probably by the end of this month, hopes to have it down, and we talk about what's left exactly, and he has mentioned at the last PSD meeting, and again, there are no details attached to this whatsoever at this point in time, that there may be a little money left to do some additional work, and whether that additional work would be a little piece of phase two, that was talked about, but again, nothing has been decided, nothing's been determined, but there could be, instead, they're not for this phase two project for new funding, you pretty much have to have everybody ready to go, and that's unfortunately what always takes so long, putting these projects together. But if there is additional money left over, and USDA does approve, there may be some movement on that project, but again, that's, we'll know a little bit more by the end of this month.
I mean, if there's money left over, and you can pick up a few more houses, I think we would all.
And that's, we'll, we'll have a better feel, again, it does look like there would be, because there's some money left, that's what my projection is at this point, and his as well, but we have yet to sit down and determine how much, and what would be feasible, so I'm hoping by your next meeting that we'll have a, a better idea of what maybe we could do in the meantime, to kind of keep some momentum going in this direction, but again, no guarantees, but that's what Rick had mentioned at the last meeting, and again, USDA has a little more flexibility with leftover funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, under unfinished business, we have parts community center requested, a couple meetings ago, not last meeting, meeting before, they had sent over some requests for some financial assistance, and we asked them to come back to the last, but the last meeting was a breakdown of their, a financial statement, and we haven't got that, but anyway, Danny Burneister made, and he was not, doesn't have it either, because he didn't really know what was going on with that, and I don't think, so I don't wanna think on the spot, and.
No, at our last meeting, we had Charles at Toe and Calvert that asked for him to be over here, and I showed up tonight just to see if they would show up. As far as, you know, what we spend out every month, I don't have an exact number, but like, for the last two months, I've got copies of everything that's come in, you know, from donations from the Buddy League, or from donations for whoever, and, or plus there are people that rent rooms, I've got copies of that stuff, but you know, the gas bill, and for whatever reason, it's around twelve hundred bucks a month, I do know that. And I save for, I don't, just, cause the only thing that heats for gas is the heaters in the gym, and the kitchen, the cafeteria. Outside that, I don't know of anything else that uses gas up there.
That's a lot of gas.
Yeah, and, which, one reason I can see too, is we've tried to get one of our heaters fixed in the gym, and we've had no luck in getting it fixed, so that one heater is working, trying to keep up for place of two. So it's, it's constantly running about all winter, and electric, between twelve to fifteen hundred a month, just, I know it's not the exact number, but somewhere in that area.
Well, if you want, you can leave us the stuff you have, before you go home, just leave it up there, and then we'll try to figure it out.
Take out?
Yeah.
And on some of the, where I'm over the Buddy League, me and the board approve, you know, to donate some to the, to the center. But you know, after the end of, after Memorial Day, that's gonna stop, cause Buddy League will be open, and then we'll just be with our renters, and what I can get people to donate.
And the board, do they pay you a month, like, twelve months a year, or is it ten, twelve?
It's twelve, it's eight something a month, I think.
Eight, thirty, three a month.
Yeah. I, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, I wasn't prepared for this, because I was expecting.
All right, I just, I hate to put you on the spot, because I.
I was expecting somebody to be here, but then again, I know better too, so I figured I'd show up, and do the best I could anyway.
Doc, what's your thoughts?
Well, I appreciate that he could show up over there, I had talked to him some prior with this, and he had talked to me about some of the concerns he had up there with what they owed, and things of that nature, and I, I had told him that we had received a request from a corporal community center to help him with some things, and that if they had needed help, that they could send to us, and if we could look at it, if we could help, we would help him with it. But I, I, I did tell him that I, we felt that there needed to be somebody, any person there to represent the community center, and I do appreciate him showing up, I mean, and I, I know it's hard to jump into the middle of that program like that, and, but what we need is a commission, I think, is to have people from the, the different boards showing up and letting us know what they do need, what they're handling things, and, and I think that, you know, the commission, the commission knows this, but I think we need to, you know, do a better job talking to our boards about what we need to be able to take, help, help them do the job they're trying to do, but I do appreciate the, the work that he does, you know, kids up there, and the community center, and things of that nature, I appreciate the fact he showed up tonight.
So the Buddy League, does it pay the board a set, or the center a set fee to use the facility, it's just a donation for everybody?
Yeah, I talked about it myself.
Sure.
Cause I know the predicament the center's in, and I talked to some of the other members on the Buddy League, and we all agreed to help the center. And you know, it may be two hundred dollars, or whatever, from the Buddy League, they say, I think, I think I'd give like six, seven hundred dollars out of Buddy League already, and just to keep it open, cause, I mean, if it closes down, a lot of them kids ain't gonna have nowhere to go.
Yeah, I think you all are gonna have to, as a board, start thinking outside of the box a little bit up there, on how to raise money, like, maybe have somebody coming in and doing lessons, paying, doing lessons, different, I know you had a ballgame, or practice session between Chitmanville and Lincoln County, I mean, things like that, to get, you know, the benefits to kids, they're in there using it, and you make a little bit of money too, so.
Well, I need some help.
Right.
I need some fellow members that see, that wanna keep it open, not just wanna show up when it's time to collect money, you know what I'm saying? Cause you never see them until there's money coming in, unless it's a board meeting night, and then it's all, we're, we're, we're not doing this, or we're not doing that, we might as well just close it down, and I don't get no help with this money to close it down, just put a plan in.
Let us try to figure out what the board members, and say, Doc, do you recall in the past, how many, he's gonna try to get us some bylaws sent to us, Danny is from over there, how many members the board was composed of when originally? We think that there's.
None, I, I have counted none, because I still have Brooke and Jeremy out there, so if they're not on there, then we have seven.
We have seven, and two maybe inactive, we don't know.
No, I, I don't, well, historically, I don't, you know, I, I'd probably defer that to only prior members, uh.
Right, we, we went back through and tried to look, and like fourteen, and there was none, but he said they did find some bylaws over there, so he's gonna get, with, get them back to us and see.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. I, I, I will make the comment that I think, you know, if my main concern about the community center is the kids' participation in the sports and things like that that they have up there. And, you know, their, their facilities up there are really limited in what they can do and and I, I notice, I, I had my grandson up there in, you know, in the league back last year and it was amazing when you go to the ballgames on Saturday, the whole parking lot of the school and everything, so the community really supports those kids and I think it gives them the only place, like I say, that they can really participate in those kinds of sports and, you know, whatever we could do, I hope we could do it. But I, I also realize, as the other commissioners do, what kind of a problem we're in as far as our funding and things of that nature, but I do echo your, your sentiment as far as they need to be picking out of boxes and doing those things that, that they've done before. I mean, there's some, they have some really good ideas in there when I talk to some of the parents up there, but I, I, I do feel that the commission needs to look at the constitution of the board and, and the non-merits, things of that nature and see if we can look at, maybe getting some new people in there to entertain and, and it will take time and, and, because boy, I, you know, if you only got a few people trying to run something or like that, as we, as we know from the people over at the McCorkle, it makes a rustle on everybody that's built it, so to get as many people in the community involved, I think that would be a good point to add in for them.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I did see playing the same Buddy League, Gerald.
Pardon me? Doc's granddad?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, he was a burna ball.
I just wonder if there's some way, I don't know what you charge to get into those games, I'm just thinking, maybe they could so much of the mission go back to the standard.
Well, it's, you know, I charge three bucks a person to get in, you know, kids eight and under or something like that, I don't charge. And the, you know, time I keep, what I pay a referee to come and ref and stuff to restock at the concession, I look and I take some of it and I, I do donate to the center, but I can't do it all as far as donating because the insurance for them kids is, you know, outrageous. And I got to where it covers them, if anything happens, you know, the insurance will pay for it. That's where I save as much as I can because when we start back in the fall, I've gotta pay for that insurance again, I gotta pay it all upfront.
Okay, well, that's just.
I mean, I want, give me, I mean, between now and Monday, I'll try to get you the last month or last two months of the gas bill, electric bill and all that stuff.
They've got a meeting Monday night, Doc, he must tell Melissa, so he's gonna try to.
And now.
Get a relationship together. Yeah. Not just pick that up front, but I think you all, a lot of it was wanting to see the revenue coming in also.
Right.
I think we had a gist of the bills that we used to pay them.
Like I say, in my truck, I, I'll go get it in a minute, I've got what has come in for the last two months.
Yeah.
But you know, like I say, some of that is from the Buddy League, which is gonna stop after Memorial Day. So then it's just gonna be mostly back to what the renters pay in and what comes from the school.
Yeah.
And then, you know, whatever I can get somebody to donate.
The problem you will have over there, McCorkle has done, the McCorkle Community Center board has done a phenomenal job, but they've got their expenses down, their water bills, thirty-four, forty-one a month every month, they don't have, their gas bill is very low, but they're, they don't have the size built in there to.
Well, we tried to, you know, the water bills, I think it's up to a hundred and eighty dollars a month. We tried to get that dropped, but the thing from the, the reason they can't drop is they're saying it was the size of the meters to support that fire system. They will not change it where it's got that fire system and they can't go no smaller than what they got. And the, you know, the garbage bill is like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, I think, whatever Mount State charges, something like that.
The dumpster.
Yeah, and then, you know, the electric, their excuse is it is commercial, so the commercial's always higher.
They got somebody over there to donate, maybe you all need to get in touch with some of those folks over there and let them try to help you. Because they've got loads to donate and all kinds of different people and they put foam in the windows and the winner to try to keep that.
Well, we done that, whatever Lowe's does, I can't remember what it is, where they donate to so, so much money or whatever supplies, we filled that out and did it and we haven't heard nothing yet. So we're still waiting to hear from that too.
And we gave Charles the information to fill out to become a nonprofit where you could apply for grants and stuff over there too.
Okay, well, maybe we'll see that Monday. If not, I'll be sure to mention it.
Yeah, we gave that to him where you, I think there's grant money out there, but you have to be set up as a nonprofit to apply for it.
Right.
You know, I think Zach Mayner and Tom Mayner will turn to helping the old, there's some money and stuff over there that way, but, I mean, that's, that's an option too, I'm, I'll look into. I mean, we're trying to help you, but like Doc said, our, you know, we're tied here.
Right, I understand, I mean, we don't, you know, every little bit helps. We appreciate anything we can get.
What about, let's just put a buck on here under unfinished business and then we'll try to get some of this ironed out between now and, if that's making. You just wanna go ahead and get that stuff that you got.
Yeah, I'll get it.
All right, thank you, Danny.
You're welcome.
Okay. Josh, I don't know if, Doc, you've had a chance to look at this, the stuff list under unfinished business, do you all have any questions? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to accept the unfinished business that's listed on the agenda? Okay, you have a motion, hold a second. Okay, all in favor, aye. Motion carries. Okay, if you guys don't have anything else, I would just like to mention the lower Mud River Water Project Celebration was today and we've been cutting and it was just a great turnout and the Lincoln PSD did a great job on it, Doc, everything was really nice, I just wanna thank Sam again over at the PSD for doing all the legwork today to put that off, that was a pretty good, pretty good deal. Josh, do you have anything?
Uh, I'll, I'll mention this real quick and I've, I've got more on this for a later time, but you're, you're gonna hear me talk about this probably a lot in the next year, but I know it's early, but the talk of, of grant money and, and funding for A R C, you know, USDA rule about whatever it may be, funding for, for community centers, a lot of this hinges on the census next year. And quite frankly, there's, there, there's, it started on the state level and they have this, it's called a, it's called a complete count committee that's kind of running from, from the state level on down. And some other counties have, have kind of started the process, but it's a process of basically just raising awareness for the, the individuals in, in, in your county and your state to fill out the census. One of the things that the US Census talks about and defines is what they call a hard to count community and they basically do that by census tracts. And, and like I said, they define hard to count communities as any community that does not get seventy-five percent participation rate on the first outreach, which is basically a paper census. And I think the state of West Virginia as a whole, I mean rural areas are more difficult usually across the country. And I think the state of West Virginia as a whole has about twenty-five percent hard to, it's defined hard to count. Lincoln County of our five census tracts, four are considered hard to count. Only one census tract, the one in the east end of the county, had about an eighty-five percent rate. You move this way and you start getting down into the sixties and the one that basically encompasses Harts Creek is down into the low fifties. The concerning part about that is that the census in 2020 is not going to be paper ballot to start. You're gonna have the option, paper ballot, or paper ballot, paper, I'm in your building right now, you're paper census. You're gonna have the option, but you're gonna get basically a, you're gonna get outreach in the mail that says, hey, go to our website, fill out the census. If you'd like to fill out the census via paper, let us know, we'll send it to you. One of the problems with rural areas is obviously lack of broadband. You've got basically about twenty-five to thirty percent of Lincoln County that is either, doesn't have an internet subscription or is dialing. So with all that said, you're gonna hear me harp about this in the next, you know, year, I might just say this after every meeting next year, fill out the census, fill out the census, fill out the census because, because really, I mean, it impacts everything we talked about tonight, about water projects, people are worried, Medicaid funding, child nutrition type, all of these things matter and it's only done once every ten years. So I hope that, you know, you know, from our part, from the county standpoint, that we try to promote this in the centers and the schools, things of that nature, because it's, again, we're not, because we're rural and we don't have, just by nature, have the best participation, it's going to be even more of a challenge because of this internet piece this time, so.
So what will they send a card out to everybody?
I'm not sure what it's gonna look like, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, uh, it's gonna be something in the mail that says, go to this website, fill out the census, if you would like to receive a paper census, contact us, call us, whatever. I mean, the Census Bureau, if, if you don't fill it out, I mean, they, 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 you know, send people out obviously and they come to your house, but it's, it makes it more difficult, it makes it more expensive. And again, the more that they have to send out, they know that they undercount certain areas. And so we wanna make sure that, you know, here, you know, I, I, you know, it would be a, a huge goal just to get that rate up. It'd obviously be great if we weren't defined hard to count, but if we could just get that rate up, that first, that first touch, you know, whether that's opening up the schools for people that don't have solid internet to be able to go in and promote that in the communities, maybe go, I mean, promote the community centers that might have an internet connection where people are gonna do it. I think it's just building awareness about how important this is, particularly for rural communities and the funding that, that we don't receive because we don't have the best participation. It's critical, it's important and, and again, we're gonna, I'm gonna start, you know, being a burden for next year and a half because it's something that rural communities always have a challenge with and I hope that we can, we can push that out a little bit, so.
All right.
But that's all I have.
So you're warning us, we're gonna carry it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear it.
Okay, if nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn until, until our next regular session, which is scheduled for Thursday, May sixteenth at six P M. Okay, I'll mention the second, all in favor, aye.
Got it.
Okay, so we stand adjourned until May sixteenth.